God be merciful to me, a sinner. God be merciful to me, a sinner. God be merciful to me, a sinner. Christ is risen from the dead, trembling death by death, and to those in the tombs giving life. Христос воскрес из мертвых, смертью смерть подолоб, и тем, что враг жития даровал. Christ is risen from the dead, trembling death by death, and to those in the tombs giving life. Make the pure light of your divine knowledge shine in our hearts, O loving master. Open the eyes of our minds that we may understand the message of your gospel, instill in us the fear of your blessed commandments, that we may subdue all carnal desires and follow a spiritual way of life, thinking and doing all that pleases you. For you, O Christ, our God, are the enlightenment of our souls and bodies, and we give glory to you together with your eternal Father and your most holy good in life-giving Spirit, now and forever and ever. Amen. Christ is risen. Христос воскрес. And welcome to this evening's first adult Bible study, our first session. We will be going through the entire Bible following the history of salvation storyline. And so we'll begin today with Genesis, the first book of the Bible, and the first creation story. First, before we begin, I hope that all of you have one of these. These are a must. The catechism of the Ukrainian Catholic Church, Christ Our Paska. And so I'd like to begin by quoting from here in reference to the Holy Scriptures and the reading of Holy Scripture. So if you have this at home, it's paragraph 46 on page 25, and it reads as follows: "Saint Jerome teaches that ignorance of the scriptures is ignorance of Christ. Therefore, to know Christ, one must read Holy Scripture, which, in the words of Saint Paul, is inspired by God and useful for teaching, for reproof, for correction, and for training in righteousness, so that everyone who belongs to God may be proficient and equipped for every good work." And the quote is from 2 Timothy, chapter 3, verses 16 to 17. "One must read the Holy Scriptures daily. Reading Holy Scripture every day, even for a brief moment, should become the custom of every Christian family. The reading should become people's daily nourishment." Paragraph 48 reads as follows: "The Holy Fathers of the Church not only read the Holy Scriptures themselves, they also insistently encouraged all the faithful to read them." Saint John Chrysostom writes, "Reading the Holy Scriptures, dearly beloved, is a great good. It arouses the soul to an appreciation of wisdom, directs the mind to heaven, and brings one to a thankful attitude, preventing our getting excited over any earthly reality, bringing our thinking to rest in the world beyond, brings ourselves to do everything with a view to reward from the Lord and to deal with the trials of virtue with great readiness." And finally, Metropolitan Andrei Shevtitsky, so following the tradition of the Holy Fathers of the Church, so we find this in paragraph 49. Andrei Shevtitsky refers to the Holy Scriptures as an infinite and unfathomable ocean of truth and goodness. He writes, "Holy Scripture is the word of God Most High, One in the Trinity, spoken to us useless sinners, whom the Most High calls to the dignity of being His children and who receives us as His children. It is therefore an inexhaustible treasury of all heavenly blessings, a source of the light of heavenly infallible truth and of living water, flowing unto eternal life and the eternal salvation of the whole human race." And so let us come to understand what medicine for the soul, what angelic nourishment, what strength for life, and what a most wonderful gift from heaven is every word of Holy Scripture. And finally, about the relationship between the Old Testament and the New Testament and that inner unity between the two. In chapter 43, paragraph 43, the catechism writes the following: "The Old Testament prepares us for the new, and the New Testament fulfills the old. The two shed light on each other, and both are the true word of God." So obviously, the second book that you should have with you this evening and you should have in your home is, of course, the Holy Scriptures. And you can buy these leather cases to protect the Holy Scripture. If you don't have it with you, then it's a good idea to go find it. And once you find it, you may have to do this. Get all the dust off of it, and keep that dust off by doing this every day. And I once, actually, somebody said, or I've heard this, that, you know, every time we do this, every time we open the Holy Scriptures, we come face to face with the living God. And so when we read the Holy Scriptures, we don't read for information like we would a newspaper or a magazine. We are actually reading in order to enter into a relationship with God. And if we read with faith, believing that this is the word of God, that God is speaking to us in the reading, and that God has something personally to say to us today and now through the word that we're reading, then our study of the scriptures, our reading, our daily reading becomes prayer. Because as we read, we are listening. And prayer begins with listening to God, and then responding with faith, with the obedience of faith, replying to God spontaneously in prayer, and then applying what we've heard from the Lord into our daily lives. And so let's begin. Genesis. Chapter 1. Please turn to the Book of Genesis, chapter 1. And the first creation story begins at the first verse and it ends in chapter 2, verse 4. Now, before we actually read this story, there are a few things that need to be explained in order to help us interpret the text correctly and to understand its message. So the first point is that the text is traditionally believed to be to have been written by the prophet Moses. So inspired and guided by the Holy Spirit, Moses may have taken an existing ancient account of creation and he may have rewrote it, reinterpreted to reflect Israel's faith in the one true God, the sole creator of the universe. And it was composed in a poetic way so that it could be easily remembered and memorized, told and retold especially to those who couldn't read. The inspired text teaches us the spiritual truths that God wants us to know. Point 2. The main purpose of the story is not to answer the question, "How did God create the universe?" which is a question for science, but to answer the question, "Why did God create the universe?" which is a question for theology. Now, as you study the text more deeply, you will be gently surprised to discover that the story not only answers the question, "Why did God create?", but it also gives us answers to the question, "How did God create?" And so to any reader, this should be proof enough that the text is truly inspired by God. Point 3. The story is not describing seven 24-hour days or one week, but seven distinct ages. And you will note that the sun and our moon and the 24-hour day are not created until the fourth day or the fourth age as described in Genesis, chapter 1, verses 16 to 17. So God created the universe in six distinct ages of time that may have been millions or billions of years in length. Point 4. You will notice that each day begins in darkness and ends in light. So darkness represents chaos, and light represents the manifestation of something new, a new order and a new beauty. And for Jews, to this day, each 24-hour day begins in the evening at sunset and ends in light the following day. And the church follows the same custom. Our liturgical day begins in the evening with sunset and ends in light the following day. Point 5. You will notice that the six days are very similar, but the seventh day is altogether different. So whereas the six days of creation begin in darkness and end in light, the seventh day begins in light and it has no end. This is the eternal age in which God will rest forever. All creation brought to completion in perfection will now rest in Him for all eternity. That's the seventh day. Point number 6. The days are not set in chronological order. So if you're looking for a chronology of events, then you won't find it if you go day 1, day 2, day 3, day 4, and so forth. So the author has used the given order to emphasize the overall order of beauty of the cosmos and not to provide a chronology of events. So the word cosmos originates from the Greek word kosmos, which means good order, good arrangement, beauty, and harmony. And for all the women, the word cosmetics comes from this word, cosmos. Beauty, good arrangement, and harmony. And so if you're looking for a chronological order that agrees with the discovery of modern science, then you will have to follow the pattern, day 1, day 4, day 2, day 5, day 3, day 6, and day 7 stands on its own. So I'll kind of explain this in another way. If someone asked you to describe your house, well, you wouldn't start by giving a chronology on how it was built. You wouldn't start on how the ground was broken and the basement was dug out and so forth. You wouldn't describe the chronology of how your house was built. You would first give an overall picture. You would describe all the rooms, the roof, the interior, the rooms. And then you would move on to the details to describe what's in each room. And that's what the author of this first creation story does. In day 1, day 2, day 3, he describes the compartments, darkness and light, water and air, and then finally land. That's day 1, day 2, day 3. And then he goes back to describe the furniture, day 4, the stars, the sun and the moon, day 5, the plants and the life in the water. And then day 6, the animals on land, and finally, the human race. And then the final overall, the conclusion is day 7. And you see, that's the way the author has chosen to describe the beauty and order of this cosmos, this wonderful universe. But you see, day 1, day 2, day 3, day 4, day 5, day 6, the chronology is this way. Day 1, day 4, day 2, day 5, day 3, day 6, and day 7 stands on its own. Point number 7. In what age are we in? So if God created the universe in seven, six ages, so in what age are we in then? Well, the story tells us that God created the human race on the sixth day. Well, did God finish creating the human race? There are still babies being born every day. And so God's not finished. And obviously, then we are still in the sixth age as long as God is still creating the human race. And so the seventh age, the final age, is the age that is still yet to come. And in the New Testament, it's referred to as the Kingdom of God or the Age to Come, the Final Age. Now, I want to make something clear. Here's something very important. This is very important. So as you know, is that as one day ends, there is no immediate transition to the next day. If you're looking at the sunset being the moment of the beginning of the next day, there's no immediate transition. There's an overlap. So as one day comes to the end, the sun sets, the new day already begins. There's an overlap. And as that one day, the old day, ends, the other one slowly takes over and then comes in its fullness. Okay? So there's a period of overlap, transition. One day comes to an end at sunset and the other one appears, is present but not fully, and then eventually the older day comes to an end and the new day takes over in fullness. Well, the same thing applies to the seventh day. We're in the later days of the sixth age. It's coming to an end, the sixth age. And the new age, the seventh age, is already, has already broken through, but it's not here in its fullness yet. It has broken through. And then there is a moment when the sixth age will come to a close and the seventh age will come to its fullness. So where did the sixth age break through? Sorry, where did the seventh age break through in the sixth age? So here's the sixth age. What is the point where the Kingdom of God breaks through? That's the seventh age. It's the moment of the resurrection. When Jesus rises from the dead, He no longer belongs to the sixth age. He comes in the Kingdom. He is already fully part of the seventh age, the seventh day, the age to come. And so His resurrection marks the breaking through of the Kingdom of God in this final sixth age in which we live. But the Kingdom of God is here but not yet fully. And the final conclusion of this sixth age is when Jesus returns in glory and then the Kingdom will come in its fullness, the seventh day. The next point is number 9. The Hebrew word bara, which is a verb. It means to create. And this verb always has God for its subject. So God creates, God bara. And it's only used three times in the entire Bible to indicate that God has created something completely, totally new, unique, that has never existed before. And all three uses of this verb bara are found in Genesis, chapter 1. In the beginning, God created bara, the heavens and the earth. So this was totally unique. The creation of the heavens and the earth is bara. And then God created the great sea monsters and every living creature that moves in the water. So the first creation, the first forms of life that are created is bara. And the third time that the word bara is used is in reference to the creation of man in God's image and likeness. Point number 10. The text uses archaic language, which is different from ours. And so it's important to know and understand the meaning of key words and phrases. So here are some examples. Heaven. We usually think of heaven being the invisible world where God dwells. But in Scripture, heaven can mean several things, actually, three different things. Heaven can refer to the sky, the earth's atmosphere, and that's called in Scripture, the first heaven. It can refer also to outer space, the universe, which is known as the second heaven. And then finally, the word heaven can refer to the invisible or spiritual world, which is known as the third heaven. So if you remember from Scripture, Saint Paul says he knows someone who is taken up to the third heaven, so into the presence of God in the invisible world. Now, the word the heavens can refer to the invisible world together with the second heaven, the universe, or it could be a reference to all three. The word earth may not necessarily refer to this planet. The word earth can refer to physical matter, soil, dust, dry land. The word light is used as a reference to star. So a light is a star in the heavens. And so lights can refer to fixed stars or moving stars, which include planets and the moons. And so in verse 16, there'll be a reference to the greater light, and that's a reference to our sun. And in the same verse, there's a reference to the lesser light, which is a reference to the moon. Now we come to this word, depending on your translation, it's in verse 6. So have a look at your verse 6. And it says, "And God said, 'Let there be,'" in my translation, I have firmament. Firmament. Some of you in your translation may have the word vault or in some translations, you may have the word dome. And that's exactly what a firmament is. It's a dome. So the firmament was like a roof above the earth in the shape of a dome. So think of a bowl upside down on a flat surface. And so it creates, it separates the atmosphere, the earth's atmosphere, from outer space. And what fills that space within that dome is the air that we breathe. And that is that first heaven. So you can say that the vault or the dome encompasses that first heaven and protects it. The Scriptures talk about the waters above and the waters below, and that's in the next verse, verse 1, verse 7 in chapter 1. And so the waters above, it was believed that there was water above there. So like when you, when you look up, what color is the sky? It's blue. And so what happens from time to time? It rains. Well, where's the water come from? There's got to be water up there. So the water comes through, penetrates the vault, the dome, and falls to the ground. So there's got to be water up there. So the waters above are the waters, so that would represent outer space. And then there's a reference to the waters below. Well, if you dig deep enough, you'll hit water. And so that's the waters below. Next word, of course, we already spoke about. The word day from the Hebrew word yom can refer to an age or a prolonged period of time or a 24-hour day. The word, the number 7 is symbolic for fullness or completion. And then finally, the word man, which is used in Genesis 26 and 27 from the Hebrew word adam and the Greek word anthropos, is a word that has a double meaning. So in Scripture, it can refer to the whole human race collectively as man and female, or it can also at the same time refer to the individual person as male or female. Two more points before we actually begin the Scripture, reading the Scripture. Point 11 is that all that God has created is good. And you will see the pattern. At the end of each day, God looks back and he says, "Hmm, it's good." And then at the end of the sixth day, when everything's finished, he looks back at it and all it, and he says in verse 31, "Hmm, it's very good." And the last point is that God, of course, is the sole creator of all things, who pre-existed and transcends all His creation. He alone has no beginning and no end. All creation has a beginning. God alone has no beginning. And all creation reveals God's divine plan, His will, His design, His purpose, and His final goal. So God didn't create this world and then abandon it. He sustains it at every moment, governs all things, and He is leading history to its final fulfillment. So God is always in control. So you probably won't remember all those things, but sometimes we have to hear things three or four times before they kind of sink in and stay with us. So all those points are in the notes that I prepared, and you will find them on the website. There's an attachment, PDF attachment, and you can print that out for yourself. So let's begin with the story. I'm going to read it, and then we're going to go back and study it verse by verse. "In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. The earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep, and the spirit of God was moving over the face of the waters. And God said, 'Let there be light,' and there was light. And God saw that the light was good, and God separated the light from the darkness. God called the light day, and the darkness He called night. And there was evening, and there was morning, one day. And God said, 'Let there be a firmament' in the midst of the waters, and let it separate the waters from the waters. And God made the firmament and separated the waters which were under the firmament from the waters which were above the firmament, and it was so. And God called the firmament heaven, and there was evening, and there was morning, the second day. And God said, 'Let the waters under the heavens be gathered together into one place, and let the dry land appear,' and it was so. God called the dry land earth, and the waters that were gathered together He called seas. And God saw that it was good. And God said, 'Let the earth put forth vegetation, plants, yielding seed, and fruit trees bearing fruit in which is their seed, each according to its kind upon the earth.'" each according to its kind upon the earth. And it was so. The earth brought forth vegetation, plants yielding seed according to their own kinds, and trees bearing fruit in which is their seed, each according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. And there was evening, and there was morning, a third day. And God said, let there be lights in the firmament of the heavens to separate the day from the night. And let them be for signs and for seasons and for days and years. And let them be lights in the firmament of the heavens to give light upon the earth. And it was so. And God made the two great lights, the greater light to rule the day and the lesser light to rule the night. He made the stars also. And God set them in the firmament of the heavens to give light upon the earth, to rule over the day and over the night, and to separate the light from the darkness. And God saw that it was good. And there was evening, and there was morning, a fourth day. And God said, let the waters bring forth swarms of living creatures, and let birds fly above the earth across the firmament of the heavens. So God created the great sea monsters and every living creature that moves with which the waters swarm according to their kinds, and every winged bird according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. And God blessed them, saying, be fruitful and multiply, and fill the waters and the seas, and let the birds multiply on the earth. And there was evening, and there was morning, a fifth day. And God said, let the earth bring forth living creatures according to their kinds, cattle and creeping things, and birds of the earth according to their kinds. And it was so. And God made the beasts of the earth according to their kinds, and the cattle according to their kinds, and everything that creeps upon the ground according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. Then God said, let us make man in our image after our likeness. And let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the air and over the cattle and over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps upon the earth. So God created man in his own image. And in the image of God, he created him. Male and female, he created them. And God blessed them. And God said to them, be fruitful and multiply, and fill the earth and subdue it. And have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the air and over every living thing that moves upon the earth. And God said, behold, I have given you every plant yielding seed, which is upon the face of all the earth, and every tree with seed in its fruit. You shall have them for food. And to every beast of the earth, and to every bird of the air, and to everything that creeps on the earth, everything that has the breath of life, I have given every green plant for food. And it was so. And God saw everything that he had made. And behold, it was very good. And there was evening, and there was morning, a sixth day. Thus the heavens and the earth were finished, and all the host of them. And on the seventh day, God finished his work, which he had done. And he rested on the seventh day from all his work, which he had done. So God blessed the seventh day and hallowed it because on it God rested from all his work, which he had done in creation. So let's go back now and deal with each day and each verse specifically. But we're going to follow the order that gives chronology. So we're not going to go, we're not going to follow day one, day two, day three, day four. We're going to follow day one, day four, day two, day five, day three, day six. And you will see that that order matches what science proposes today. So let's begin with the first day or the first age. Most astronomers today believe that the universe was created about 13.8 billion years ago. 13.8 billion years ago. And there's a theory that was first proposed in 1927 by a Belgian priest and astronomer called Georges Lemaître. And he suggested that the universe began from one single point, which then expanded and stretched to what the universe is today. And that it's, it may still be expanding. And actually, proof is shown that it's still expanding. So according to this theory, which is now generally accepted, is that everything began from this concentrated point of matter and energy. And it was the densest and most hottest thing ever. And there is no difference between matter, you couldn't distinguish matter from energy. It was pretty well the same at that point. And at some moment, so this one point, smaller than the head on a pin, at one point in time blew up. And so that's called the Big Bang. And all of a sudden, it begins expanding at just this enormous rate. Within a fraction of a, a fraction of a second, it expands to the size of a whole galaxy, galaxy. And then the rate of expansion slows down, de-accelerates, but it's still expanding at this great speed. So God just kind of like, the whole universe just is flung right all open and expands at its amazing rate. And what started in in light very quickly returns to darkness. And so this whole expanding universe becomes a dark void for most of its time. And it's not until after 180 million years that matter forms and the first star is created. So the first star is born. And in this darkness, all of a sudden appears the light of this first star. And using telescopes, astronomers are still looking to this day for trace light from that first star, which would go back to about 13.7 billion years ago. Okay? So keeping that in mind, let's listen to what the Scriptures say about the first day. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. Heavens here refers to the invisible world and this, this universe. Earth refers to physical matter. And so in the beginning, according to the teaching of the church, that God created both the invisible and visible worlds simultaneously. They're both created at the same time. And as this universe is created, it is void and in darkness. And the spirit of God moves over the face of the waters. So the Greek translation says that the spirit moved through the waters. So moved through this expanding space, this dark void. And then all of a sudden, God said, let there be light. And there was light. The creation of the first star. And God saw the, the light was good. And God separated the light from the darkness. And God called the light day. And the darkness he called night. And there was evening, chaos. And there was morning, something new, light, one day. Now, if you were paying attention, you would have seen a reference to the Holy Trinity within the first three verses. So in the beginning, God, God the Father created the spirit of God, the Holy Spirit, the third person of the Trinity, was hovering through the waters. And then God said, the word of God, the second person of the most holy Trinity. So God the Father creates everything through his word. All that is created is created through him, the word of God. God said, there you have it. In the first three verses, a reference to the most holy Trinity. Now we're going to jump to the fourth day or the fourth age. So if we turn again to science, science tells us that the first star appeared at 180 million years, bringing an end to that dark age, so the appearance of light in the darkness. And that the first galaxies were born about 400 million years after the Big Bang. And that the first stars of our galaxy, the Milky Way, were formed about 600 million years after the Big Bang. And that our Milky Way galaxy came into being after 5 billion years. And our sun and its solar system, including planet earth, came into being about 9.3 billion years. What's a couple billion years for God? I mean, he's eternal, so this is nothing. Time is of no essence to God because God is everlasting. He is forever. So let's look at day four. It says that in day four, God said, let there be lights in a firmament of heaven. So what he's saying is, let us create more stars in the heavens. And let them be signs. Let them be for signs and for seasons and for days and years. So in other words, let them be there so that the human race can actually tell time, to mark out seasons and to be able to measure years. And let them be lights in the firmament of the heavens to give light upon the earth. So let them give light to the earth. And it was so. And so God made the two greater lights, the greater light to rule the day, that means the sun. And then their lesser light, the moon, to rule the night. And he also made all the stars. And God set them in the firmament of the heavens to give light upon the earth, to rule over the day and over the night, and to separate the light from the darkness. And God saw that it was good, and there was evening, and there was morning, the fourth day or the fourth age. So just to kind of give you a summary of what's happening scientifically, so at some point in time, our sun is created. It's a star. And with the creation of our sun, its solar system, so all the planets are then created and, and, and come into orbit around the sun. And at that point, our, our planet earth is still very hot. It hasn't totally solidified. It is still very, how would you say, kind of flexible or fluid. And there is no 24-hour day. The orbit of the earth is inconsistent. So you see the earth kind of going around the sun, and it's just doing this. Right? So there is no consist, there can't be any consistent 24-hour day if it's, if it's turning like this. Okay? And then at some point, something hits the earth and a big chunk breaks away from the earth. And that chunk then goes into orbit around the earth. And that chunk becomes the moon. And because the earth is still soft and fluid, it quickly fills in and it becomes circular once again. And so all of a sudden, the moon, a breakaway from the earth, goes into orbit around the earth. And it's the moon that gives the earth its stability. And so there's still a little bit of a wobble. But it's the moon that gives the earth a stable rotation. And it's with the creation of the moon that we then have the 24-hour day. And then we see with that 24-hour day, the sky rotates in a, in a consistent manner. And you can read the sky, the stars, and be able to then demarcate seasons and time and years and so forth. So you see, day four follows from day one. Let's go now to day two. Day two. God said, let there be a firmament in the midst of the waters, and let it separate the waters from the waters. And God made a firmament that separated the waters that were under the firmament from the waters which were above the firmament. And it was so. And God called the firmament heaven. And there was evening, and there was morning, the second day. And so this day now talks about the creation of the atmosphere around the earth. So as the earth cooled, so there was gases that surround it, as it cooled, you have the formation of water. So the earth is then covered with water. But there is no atmosphere that is able to sustain life as yet. It's probably poisonous. So the creation of the atmosphere takes a long time, but eventually what happens is that oxygen is created, possibly from the waters and so forth. Then over time, God creates the sky, the earth's atmosphere, that is able to sustain life. So you have the waters that are important for sustaining life. And then you have air that's important for sustaining life. That's day two. The creation of the earth's atmosphere. Let's move on from day two to day five. Day five. And God said, let the waters bring forth swarms of living creatures. And let birds fly above the earth across the firmament of the heavens. So God created the great sea monsters of every living creature that moves with which the waters swarm according to their kind. And God blessed them, saying, be fruitful and multiply, and fill the waters and the seas, and let the birds multiply on the earth. And there was evening, and there was morning, the fifth day. So day five is all about life forming in the waters, the first forms of life forming within water. And then the development of all the living creatures within the waters and eventually the birds. And so again, this agrees with, with what science tells us, that the first forms of life appear in water. Day one, day four, day two, day five. Let's move on to day three. Verse nine. And God said, let the waters under the heavens be gathered together in one place, and let the dry land appear, and it was so. And so in the next day, which is day three, the waters begin to recede and the dry land appears. And eventually, the plant life, which is found in the water, moves onto the land. And vegetation eventually covers the earth. That's day three. From day three, we move on to day six. And that begins on verse, in verse 24. And God said, let the earth bring forth living creatures according to their kinds, cattle and creeping things, and beasts, and the earth, and of the earth according to their kinds. And it was so. And God made the beasts of the earth according to their kinds, and the cattle according to their kinds, and everything that creeps upon the ground according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. So in the first half of the sixth day or the sixth age, So in the first half of the sixth day or the sixth age, God creates all the animals upon the earth. And then the last thing to be created is the human race. And so we come to verse 26 and 27. Now, there's almost like a pause in creation. God almost like takes a break. And there's a moment of introspection, he kind of looks into himself. And there's a discussion as if within the Most Holy Trinity, among the persons. And then the decision to make man in the image and likeness of God. So verse 26, "Then God said, 'Let us make man in our image after our likeness and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the air and over the cattle and over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps upon the earth.'" And so God created man in his own image. In the image of God, he created him. Male and female, he created them. So let's take this apart a little bit more deeply. Gregory of Nis, one of the fathers of the church, says here that God created twice. So first, he created in his mind the whole human race. So it's almost like an artist, before he begins to paint, he has to have the picture in his mind. Or the same thing, when someone invents something, they have to have it in their mind. And then once they have it in their mind, then they go about in fulfilling it, making a reality, painting the picture or building whatever they have created in their mind. Well, God, the Creator, did the same thing. He had in his mind the whole human race. So it says in the scriptures, "He created man, the whole human race, in his own image and likeness, he created him in his mind." And then he proceeded to create the whole human race, to bring it into reality by creating the first human pair. Male and female, he created them. That's awesome. That means that we were in the mind of God right from the beginning. That before God even began to create the human race with the first pair, he already had us in mind, he was thinking about us, he already loved us. And he was waiting for the moment to bring us into this world and every one of our days were counted. That is totally awesome. And so God creates the first pair and he says to them, "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the earth and subdue it." Now, this command, "be fruitful and multiply," you can understand it in two ways. At least I believe so, this is my interpretation, it's not kind of a church teaching or anything. So the first kind of interpretation, of course, is, is "be fruitful and multiply, fill the earth." So let the creation of the human race continue, the realization of that creation. "Subdue the earth" means, "be good stewards of the earth, I'm trusting this world to your care." So be good stewards. "And bring me profit." So till the ground, look after it, and bring me profit. But also it can be understood in a spiritual sense, "be fruitful and multiply, grow in virtue." So grow in likeness. And so when we look at those words, "image and likeness," every human being is created in the image of God. That means that every characteristic of God is reflected in us in a limited and created way. So if God is eternal, then we have an eternal soul. We were created in time, but we have an eternal soul. If God is wisdom, we have been endowed with the gift of wisdom. If God is knowledge, we have been given finite knowledge. If God is love, we have been created to love. If God is all-knowing, we have been created to know. And so with every characteristic, you will see God's infinite characteristic reflected in a finite way within human beings. And that is what it means to be an image. Now, when you look at a coin and you'll see the image of the queen, Queen Elizabeth, you know that that's not the queen. It's just an image of the queen stamped on that coin. But how do you recognize that it's the queen? Because the image bears the same characteristics as the queen. Her head, her face, and that's how you recognize it. And so when you look at a human being, that image of God is stamped deep within us and you can recognize God by looking at those characteristics that are embedded in every human being. Now, according to the teaching of the church, according to the fathers of the church, that image of God is stamped first and foremost upon the whole human race in its fullness. So you find the fullness of God's image in the whole human race as one body. Then you find it also in marriage, in the unity of husband and wife. You have the image of God stamped within that bond, within that unity. And then finally, of course, you have the image of God stamped within every individual human being, male or female. Now, the word likeness refers to growth. So the image is static, it comes, it's part of our nature. But we are called to grow in likeness of God by God's grace. And so that is our vocation, to continually grow, to become more and more and more like God with the help of God's grace. We have to cooperate with God. But for all eternity, we are to grow in the likeness of God, but never become like him. We will never become like him, fully like him, but we can grow in our likeness to him. And so then God set the pair upon the earth and you have the creation of the human race, the sixth day, the sixth age. And then finally, we come to the seventh age. And you will notice in the text, chapter two, "Thus the heavens and the earth were finished, and all the hosts of them. And on the seventh day God finished his work which he had done and he rested on the seventh day from all his work which he had done." There is no evening here. There is no evening and morning the seventh day. "The seventh day begins in light, not in darkness, and it has no end." God rests from all that he has created. All creation is brought to fulfillment, to completion, to perfection. And then we, as the human race, were to rest in God. Everything then was to rest in God for all eternity. So just a quick review is if you follow that order, which reflects the chronology that science gives us. Day one, God creates this expanding universe with the Great Bang. It quickly falls into darkness and void. And somewhere near the end of that first age, the first star is created and it explodes, it comes into being and light appears in the darkness. There is light and there is darkness, the first day. Then you have the fourth day, where God decides to create all the other stars. And in the process, creates our solar system and the Earth. And then eventually creates the moon, which gives us the stability of actually having a 24-hour day. And then we can see all the stars which mark the seasons. And he continues creating all the stars. Even to this day, he's still creating stars. That is the fourth day. Then the second day, the Earth begins to cool and it is covered then with liquid. Water covers the entire Earth. And eventually, the atmosphere is created so that it can sustain, the Earth can sustain life because there's both water and air. That is the second day. We then move on to the fifth day, in which the first forms of life are created in the water. And God then, from those first original organisms, creates other organisms, fish and beasts and monsters that fill the seas and eventually the birds. Then we move on to the third day, where the water recedes and land appears. And eventually, the vegetation that's growing in the water is transferred to the Earth and vegetation covers the Earth, the third day. And then we move on to the sixth age, the sixth day, where the first living creatures upon Earth appear and God brings into existence all the living creatures upon the Earth. And finally, in the last part of the sixth age, he creates the human race, which is the crown of all his creation because it is created in his image and likeness. And then finally, when the sixth age comes to a close, then comes the last age, the seventh age, the age of rest, which we know as the Kingdom of God. And we as Christians know that this day has already begun with the resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And that this age, this new age, the seventh day, will come in its fullness when our Lord returns in glory at the end of this age. The Lord will come in the kingdom, in his kingdom, and all its glory. The resurrection of dead, the dead will take place, the judgment of the world. Everything will be brought to perfection and we will enter into that final age to rest in God so that all may be in God for all eternity. Amen. It's an amazing creation story and there's so much depth into it. And I hope you have appreciated how this first creation story, which is objective, not only answers the question, "Why did God create this universe? Why he created me? Why did he create you? Why he created all of us?" But it goes further on to even answer the question, "How God created?" Dear brothers and sisters, in the end, you know, there's only one truth. God is truth, there's only one truth. And whatever truth these scriptures propose and whatever truth science propose, both will agree. There could be no contradiction. Truth cannot contradict itself, God cannot contradict. The truth of science and reason will agree with the truth of scripture. This concludes our first session on the first creation story. I invite you to reread the story, go back and read the notes that I have provided. And next week, same time, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, we will then proceed to the second creation story, which is older than the first creation story and is much more subjective and very beautiful. So we'll see you next Wednesday at 7:00 PM. God bless. Kristos vos gras, Christ is risen. Christ is risen from the death, trembling death by death and to those in the tombs giving life. Christ is risen from the death, trembling death by death and to those in the tombs giving life. Christ is risen from the death, trembling death by death and to those in the tombs giving life. Kristos vos gras is mertveh, smertu smert podoloh itim shav rubah jit'ya dorvav inam dorvav jit'ya vichne poklan'eymos yot ri'dnevnu vos kresi